We open up the property subcommittee meeting on March 30th at 12:30 in the afternoon. Thank you all for coming out. Hopefully, very shortly, the role of the subcommittee to discuss approval of the last minutes, but we haven't had a meeting. So, the meeting was the organizational meeting, as we reported, so there really isn't approval of minutes. Nobody here for public speak. So, I hope you all got the draft of the role of the committee.
I don't believe I did.
Barb didn't sign that.
Unless it was attached.
It wasn't attached to that.
Should have been attached to.
Do you?
Yeah. I took a stab at the role from the committee. It's short, really one sentence, but it's a little bit, I mean, oftentimes, people think of the property committee as really acquiring and disposing of property. The definition that I drafted was a little more extensive in that it dealt with management of real estate of the city than anything that, any property that the city has that it has to do with the role of record keeping. I think is a fair assessment that if we dealt with records or utilization of property, that it would come under the purview of the property subcommittee.
Nice.
It's a wider definition than most people think of this.
That was one thing that I found when I was researching public safety, even though things like they're in charge of homeland security. You know, like, I mean, there's some really.
Well, it's good to know.
Yeah.
They'll call you if we have any devices comes knocking.
Oh, good.
So, can you, can you explain maybe to me, because I'm new, what each of these, you know, including, boom, 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 what each of those would entail? Like, what, what is the role in terms of, so if there is property out there in the world
that belongs to the city?
Or that we want to belong to the city?
Right.
Would we initiate the purchase and would we follow that purchase all the way through? Or do we just, do we just make the recommendation and then somebody in the mayor's office does all of the?
As far as purchasing any property, there would have to be funding of it. You'd have to, and work to secure the funding available, that you'd work certainly in conjunction with the mayor's office, because the mayor would have to approve of the purchase. Any departments that might be involved in the use of the property, whether it be recreation, wastewater.
Reservation, whatever.
Whatever, whatever.
Okay. So, two things that I would say, so when you say concerning real property and personal property, we should probably add owned by the city or affiliated with the city or somehow related to the city, somehow?
That certainly is, is a little more restrictive than.
Conceivably, we might not own it yet.
Yeah.
Correct. But so within the boundaries of the city of East Hampton. So, here's my example question and why I bring this up. So, our city recently signed on to the abandoned property by the attorney general, the Abandoning Housing Initiative. We all received a small press release about that. So, working in collaboration with AEG, those court approved this program of forces to notify owners of distressed or abandoned, and then through this initiative, we can work with lean and receive those properties. It seems to me that we were making those kind of moves on people who own property in East Hampton, and that it is something that should probably kind of go through city council, which we go through other departments.
And would that start with the board of health first?
It could start at a variety of different levels.
Depends on the reason.
Yeah, it could be financial, it could be something.
And you bring up a good point, but certainly, the taking of property is something that happens to the treasurer's office with the mayor's consent. So, those are issues that really the council hasn't been involved in, but that doesn't mean to say that someone might not think of.
Well, and it also involves.
Ordinance that would apply to that area.
Right.
That state law would allow us to be flexible with. We think of that, I think of that generally being governed by state law only.
Right. So, if it was the health department, that would fall under public safety, because the health department calls it a public safety.
And then would you then, if it was a property that somehow made it over to you because it was falling down, I'd say, then you would maybe, if, if we were going to then take it over, would you then refer it to this committee and then it would ultimately go to?
So far, none of these situations are even coming close to city council at all.
Okay.
So, I'm wondering if it's something that does need an elected, you know, like publicly elected officials who represent constituents in the residents of East Hampton, if there needs to be that seat at the table when these are going on. And I thought property was maybe where it would land. That's a good question.
I think we'd have to bring up the specific, you know, the individual specific and certainly keep that open. And of course, the clause at the end, which says, "And others such, such other methods as may be referred," gives the property committee or the council the right to refer that to any committee.
Right. So, this seems kind of copy and pasted from the attorney general's office. It doesn't really speak to specifics as to how this is being used in East Hampton. When we did ask the mayor about it, she said they had already, I did that at a city council meeting where they have, I think they, they had already used it or had a couple of properties that were in process with that. And I'm just wondering if it's something that city council should be, you know, just need to check.
You bring up a good point. Certainly, the council could be involved in this. I'd like to see more communication with the administration, if possible, as we proceed with any issues.
Right.
We're here to consult. But I hadn't, I hadn't heard anything specifically.
Right. So, it might be something you follow up on, which I mean, probably should have gone into your business, but I mean, we were talking about the whole.
It all fits within the role.
Talking about, like, here's an example.
I think we're talking about within the roles.
I'm new to property, so I don't really.
Yeah. Certainly, there are certain pieces of land that we lease.
I was gonna say, each one of these, we could maybe get in front of various department heads and say, "What if? What if this happens? What would your department, what would your role be?" And then we can kind of flesh out, because I'm very careful, you know, kind of a, you know, one of those kind of deals, where if it comes in here.
Ah, flow checks.
And it goes over here.
Flow checks, okay.
It just, you know, it can be anything. But I'm saying, you know, it might be helpful, and maybe we start with the mayor and say, "What if we purchase? What if we lease? What if there's a rental situation? What happens today to those scenarios? Where do they go, i.e., maybe to the health people or public safety? And then where do they go? Like, who makes the ultimate, we're buying, we're getting rid of, we're leasing, we're doing whatever, who's sitting at that table? And then we construct it in a way that gets us at the table."
Right.
And then we, if we put it on paper, then no one can, you know, then we can say, "Oh, all right."
You bring up some interesting issues. My recommendation is that we, anytime you have any issues, you go right to the state statutes.
Okay.
Look at what the law says, municipal law regarding any particular subject or any particular area. And that starts to set the role of the state, the municipality, the roles of the executive and the legislative roles. And which brings me to a handout I have from, oh, it went back in 2000, which talks about disposition.
It was back when my back didn't hurt.
Of property.
It's a different kind of pain, you're suggesting, yeah.
Of surplus real property. One of the questions was asked, "How do we dispose of property?"
Yep.
And who, what are the various roles?
Okay.
So, you can take that home, read that, refer back to the chapters, read the chapters yourself.
See if there's been any changes since then.
Is my recommendation.
I agree.
Because oftentimes, there are interpretations, there are different ways of reading the statute that it behooves all of us who really want to know how things are run to go back to the enabling statutes.
Um, yeah, and I would.
I can't stress that enough.
Yeah, and I think getting our perspective on paper then facilitates a dialogue to, "What is your interpretation? Here's our interpretation." And then we can all kind of get to a flesh and blood agreement. This is the interpretation, yeah.
And I would say, I thought the Parsons Street School sale went fairly smoothly. Whatever process we had put together went fairly smoothly.
It did go fairly smoothly. I was, had been hoping that we would have get a higher price for the property, but I think the use of the property in the end offset the price.
We were able to put a lot of, you know, caveats with that deal, and I think it worked out well for East Hampton as far as getting that piece of that.
I think, I think that it's a good use for the property for today. I think it excellent quality.
Yeah.
Great for the neighborhood and good for the tax rules. So, I think that offset the city in the beginning a few more dollars in the process. But there is a role where we set the standards of what the restrictions are if any on property sale.
Right. And actually, to, I mean, I'm glad that came up, because I have a couple of questions about, like, do we have an inventory of our properties?
That's one thing that I would like us to ask our city, I think it's the plan, to give us a list of all the properties, because if we do not have that, we think, you know, a list of city real estate properties. That was one of the things I was hoping to ask about, because we should. We do have, and brought for handout here, is a fleet inventory.
And this falls under personal property?
This falls under what I consider personal property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through all our cars.
The fleet of vehicles.
Yeah.
And I think we have page, we should have pages one through four. I'm not sure if we copied that right, but that's something that we should be reviewing on a regular basis, anticipating what the capital moves will be.
Like, two twos and two threes.
Two twos and two threes. Well, let's make sure we get to the.
We need a one and two.
Four.
We're gonna have to talk to your secretary.
All right.
I think it was.
I am guilty. I copied this.
I knew that.
I copied this.
Well, let's start on page two then.
So, welcome, make sure you have your phone.
So, yeah, this is something that, you know, residents have brought up to me, that they've noticed an awful lot of new cars, you know. Last winter was really tough on our fleet, and I know there were a couple of city council meetings where it felt like an open show every other car. So.
We usually face that with supplemental appropriations after the free cash has been set, which enables us to look at all of the needs and.
At least the ones I'm looking at, there's nothing terrible in the office.
We manage, I think, pretty well, keep the vehicles in good use and repair for the most part, for a long time.
I said 2015, so it'll be a while before the council of AEG, I think that was still made.
And it may very well have, but it's still been listed on.
It's an asset.
It becomes an asset of the community.
Yeah.
We do not have an inventory of computers and other personal property.
Computers and software.
Computer software.
Because a lot of the software that's done for citizens is pretty expensive, because it is a specific need, you know, whether or not we need to do updates or anything like that. Yeah, I mean, the technology budget is a bit.
Now, other than just having that inventory, when and where and how that gets updated, wouldn't that be the purview of that guy? I don't know who's, who does IT. Your parents.
Well, the purview of the departments, the mayor would ask the departments for recommendations for the new budget. We'll be seeing the budget shorter. That becomes, recommendations come up from the department heads, that's where you would see.
But we wouldn't dictate what level of software they have. I don't feel qualified to do that. No, 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 it's just the cost, because we pay for it, so it's a part of the inventory.
You'd see that budget.
Because some of those software programs are specific to certain departments, like for the SSSR.
Right, you know.
And they're, they're expensive because they're so proprietary.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And there's always the balance of, do you want nice looking appearances, conference table, the chairs, city looks good, do you just spend a lot of money? Well, do you want it drab or do you want it to look halfway decent? I think halfway decent and a nice image for the community is important.
Right.
Yeah. People may be with you on this. To go back to the inventory and to put on my district two hat, I think that there's that property behind the Parsons Street, which I've come up, and I know it's important to the community that something gets done with that space. I see the city right now wrapping up a lot of programs that, you know, may have been caused by the company, you know, the boardwalk suspension out, the mail suspension out. Like, we don't seem to have any of those kind of projects coming up right now. And a lot of people in districts have asked about, like, what's gonna happen with that property? So, I don't know how we get following that. Do we start with some sort of, like, your property, do we have a public forum, like, let's get some input from the community? I mean, I've heard garden, I've heard dog park.
Right.
Certainly, that would be something that we could do. I would like to see some ability to have some funding for that. I would like to have as a, as a kind of a plan in advance of, there's a parks grant coming up, and if we give this, that might make sense, and should we be this type of park or that type of park or incorporate a garden? And I think that generally drives the issues as opposed to, "Let's have a grand plan and figure out how we're gonna fund it and then find out." There's very, we really have to be extremely clear.
Sometimes the opposite is true as well, where we do, we have to have, like, those grants come up and you kind of have to have a plan in place, ready to go.
Right.
And then you can apply for the grant. So, the idea kind of has to come before the model.
Certainly, a vision for that, that space. I always saw that space being reserved for parks and for gardens.
Mm-hmm, right. And we have a community garden that's not full, so it maybe doesn't mean that's to do, you know, this is why.
Or there's an access, right.
And, and that, so there's two pieces of property right around the Parsons.
How big are they?
The one back is pretty significant. It's where the buses used to turn.
I wouldn't, if I may, just for a moment, I think we have to stick more to the agenda and don't want to go too specific about a particular parcel.
Well, I would think that under, under new business to look in a whole, in a public forum about that piece of property. Do you want me to just admit that and write it?
If you'd like to, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think that would be something that we would do.
Or can I, can I just do it in new business, because she's jogging down there?
I'm writing it down. Yeah. You mean new business next time?
Yeah, yeah, but it ends up on the agenda next time. Talk about the possibility of holding a public forum about what to do.
About what to do with that, with that space.
With the Parsons Street School appendage, just there's one to the side of it and there's one in the back.
Any other thoughts about the role? To stick to task.
Yes.
I think for me, if we could maybe, what would be helpful to me, and I use me as the acid test for this, since I don't know, if we put, if we made these into a bulletized list, purchase, lease, rightful management, record keeping, with then a short blurb on what that means? Like, what does record keeping mean when you say record keeping? It would be, well, I don't even know what, utilization, disposition.
Well, I'm thinking this is record, is record, what, what assets do we have?
Then we could put that.
Inventory of assets.
What, inventory of assets slash, yeah, all assets, it's real and property or personal. I just think that would clarify this, so we can give an indication of what we mean by record keeping, just removing and approving. And I'm all about.
And on the, and on the other hand, in terms of defining a broad role for, for any committee, it's important to be, I think, a little broad about the definitions and not, not get too tied down with specifics as to how some, I don't, I don't think, in terms of defining the role of committee, we need to be that specific, because then it could be limited, "Oh, geez, this is, this is, we meant this and this, we're not gonna do that."
Would, would we be interested?
So, this is really a much, I think, a broader, although I certainly, for the orientation as we go through and deal with various issues, I think to add to our orientation manual, it would be helpful to have that kind of definition.
And kind of what you were saying before, I mean, if we go back to what the state says, then I'd be interested in knowing what their interpretation of that is, so that we can get these things down on paper that are in fact a common ground, that we both know what we mean by record keeping, not just us, or that they have a different interpretation of record keeping. I think we need to make it bulletproof, that record keeping, what they think and what we think is exactly this, because otherwise, it's open to interpretation on both sides. And they're right and we're right.
Welcome to municipal government.
That's why I'm saying, if we, if we're slightly more in keeping with, it doesn't have to be a real definition, but, you know, as an example, you can put that, you know, things like, but not, but not limited to, things like that.
Right.
Because I think we did that with the finance committee. We kind of gave what we interpreted the line item to be, but we said, "But not limited to these things." It's, it can be this, but it can also be more.
And I think the, the last clause gives the council the right to send in any matter. So, that's really what we're talking about.
Yep. Yeah. Well, in looking at, one of the things is, do, do we want to include blighted and abandoned properties? Because the way.
Would they be excluded?
Um, the, the way the abandoned housing initiative works now, just giving it a, how the program works, is that it addresses municipalities, share the address with the attorney general's office, they backtrack, figure out who owns what, and what happens. Where I was thinking about, if the property gets inserted, is that, you know, if they find something in the tax rules or the housing inspector finds something that they want to want, that it comes to property and says, "This is an address that we want for the attorney general's office because of blah, blah, blah."
That's what I think. Allah, the building that's in the circle, like, that happened, because that, that was one of those that it just happened and it did not, Joe checked with the mayor for some reason on why it wasn't part of property. And I forget the reason why, but it was with this clause, if you will, that it was, it was something that didn't fall into property, so it didn't have to come in. And it's stuff like that that I'm like, "I don't get it."
Well, so maybe that's the question, maybe you just ask the mayor, is there a vote for property, can it be with, you know, being a part of the AHI?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's hope that.
What is it called, AHI?
It's the Abandoned Housing Initiative, and it is administered by the attorney general's office to more give it a proper, real grace. Yeah, because we do have abandoned properties in town, and, you know, people will always talk about property community, like, Hurry and Scurry comes up every single time.
Who?
And Hurry and Scurry building, it's a, it's a button building, and I know the building inspector was there, it was a year in January, because I had set a little alert that it was supposed to be handled, like, within a year, and there's been no action on it. So, you know, is the property committee, somebody can reach out to the building inspector and say, "Can we ever report on these violations that you've done or they have been? Was there a timeline so that there is some sort of oversight?" Because that's a question I get all the time, you know, this building next to a shop around Manchester, heading toward some stuff, that's a big question, specifically because they're like downtown. So, yeah, I mean, I would assume that Manchester address would be on the abandoned housing initiative. Is that, is that initiative being applied fairly to all residents in East Hampton?
Yeah, these are the questions that I have.
Public speak or mayoral communications?
It's a great topic to ask questions.
Certainly, certainly.
But I think we should preempt it with what we're looking for. I think we should just hit her cold, but, by the way, here's our longer list of questions. I think she needs to come air.
Always been to give a heads up, I think.
Right, so that can be actually part of the report that we have for property, that we've discussed, that the housing initiative, what is our goal.
And we'll be inviting the mayor to our next meeting to provide an update.
What, what can we do?
At the meeting.
Because it's kind of a report of what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
So, an inventory list, a request of property, we're gonna do that?
Right.
And then, you want this settled now, today?
Unless you think we need to go to another meeting, I know.
What we're doing.
Can always be, then, I mean.
Yeah. What we're doing with public safety is we're doing this as a shared document, so we're gonna speak in the notes and we're gonna go and prove it. Have you, will you set that up? Or would you like to do that?
If you'd like to do that, I think it's great, yeah. Technology wizard here. I'm, I'm working on Dropbox and trying to get them shared documents. It's all working okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you think I'm taking minutes appropriately?
I love everything about it.
I think that's, I think that's wonderful.
With me, you need about 10 more sticky notes. I use sticky notes, I can.
I look at these and then I'm like, huh, I wonder what I meant by that.
No, I, I scribble the whole time, but I do logistics, you know what I mean? So, I do sticky notes, I don't have to pass anything out anymore. I use, yeah. I have an incredible attachment to this.
And I find that when I'm in these meetings of finance, it's the same way that I'm listening and I ask a question and they come up.
I'm supposed to be taking notes and writing this down, that's right.
I get so absorbed. Okay.
I'm not clear for anything that I brought into this.
You're good, okay. So.
Okay, so we want to know how the AHI initiative, what that's all about, we want to talk about getting an inventory of properties, we want to talk about getting an inventory of our personal property, both the fleet and potentially computers and other property. And as part of all of that insight, we specifically want to know if there's anything going on with the Parsons Street parcel, and if we should bring that to a public speak around options, plans, thoughts, in case a grant comes up, we want to be ready. Specifically that, but we may have others by the time we get them in. So, I think we need another meeting.
Yeah. That's what we do, though, we do meetings. So, yeah, I mean, I'm just presenting it as like, I'd like to have a public forum with the community.
That can be like the first one, but overall, what you're saying is, are there any projects going on in town, Allah, the boardwalk? going on in town, a la the boardwalk? Is there stuff going on to, to prettify and enhance the community in general? Specifically this, but it might be up to...
Right, we're about to get along. I mean, Pleasant Street is gonna, is gonna finish. I don't think there's anything after that.
Start on Union.
Let's do Union. We, so we have a plan for Union, that's where, I mean, it's gonna be off topic, but, so the planning department did, there's a few months ago, I think we were part of it, I always call it charles.
Just officially the new, the new business section?
Oh, wait, do we have to, I don't even know where you're talking about.
Should we, or should we?
To adjourn?
Or should we adjourn?
Oh, oh, I got you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, we could adjourn.
Do you have, do you want to meet in two weeks?
So I think you want to have a further discussion on...
So I would move that we have further discussion on the role of the property committee. I would like to incorporate Councilor Coniff's notes about doing a small description about what we mean by that. I think that clarity is important, that we define our role. I understand your point where it kind of pigeonholes us, but I think this is too vague. So, yes, so I would move that we work on this offline and then come back to vote on the different aspects of those segments.
I don't think we need to have a...
Do you want to motion to that?
Motion to, go ahead, we just don't have a motion.
Right.
We have discussion, and we're gonna go work now. You think we have to put in the...
And I would like to make a question that, under new business, that at our next meeting, we talk about the possibility of holding a public forum regards to the parcel behind the Parsons Street School, the Parsons Place, I always want to call it...
Parsons Place, yes.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah. We should get it, it's really...
Sounds good.
And I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.